The mayor recently highlighted the city's crumbling roadways with a street repair program called L.A. Neighborhood Blitz. The program was launched in Sherman Oaks and relies on neighborhood council leaders to help prioritize street repairs.
We will make sure that we don't just wait for you to call us anymore, but every single neighborhood in Los Angeles will have a truck out there proactively twice a year.
City officials say key factors of the program are community involvement and feedback from residents.
What is more basic to all of us than the quality of our streets, our sidewalks, that our trees get trimmed? This is what you promised and this is what you're delivering.
Please, when you see something, a low-hanging limb, a buckle sidewalk, a broken curb, a street that requires repairs, please do not ignore it. Report it. That is the basis of Neighborhood Council Blitz. So we're looking forward to working with each one of the over 100 neighborhood councils here in L.A.
City officials say that continued neglect of long-term fixes could be costly.
In my book, "The longer we wait, the more we pay."
The mayor also says he hopes to eventually be able to address pothole complaints within 48 hours. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Now if you spot a pothole that needs repair, all you have to do is dial 311. Well, here in Los Angeles, murals are as much a part of our landscape as the sunshine. But for years, the laws on where and when you could create one have been unclear. But now, as Rich Samuels explains, there's an effort to change that.
Councilman Jose Wezar, in his first meeting as chair of the city's Planning and Land Use Management Committee, took on the task of revising the city's mural ordinance.
When I was growing up in Bull Heights and I would walk around and see some of the murals in Estrada Courts and other parts of Bull Heights, they certainly educated me in terms of my identity and saw things on those walls. I'd go back to my classroom the next day and ask, "What was that about?", things I wasn't learning necessarily in the classroom.
I think that art should be allowed to exist even outside white walls, such as murals on private property.
My great uncle was David Alfaro Cicados, as everybody well knows, with the Alvera Street. He specifically did this mural within Los Angeles and also did one in the Palisades on private property. As he, as a muralist, came into this country, he did it for the masses.
The proposed legislation would be an important step forward to meeting the challenging task of creating an ordinance that will allow artists to legally create murals on private property with the consent of the property owners. Currently, such murals are banned while the city works on a new ordinance. Wezar's city council colleagues, who also serve on the committee, expressed their support.
In all communities that are vital and vibrant, that type of art, that type of cultural, those cultural icons are critical to a vibrant community. And so we look forward to lifting the band and look forward to a policy that is the most comprehensive and supportive of the arts and the artists who grace us with their genius.
We do absolutely enjoy and need, and I say not want, but need these murals to tell a history of Los Angeles through the years.
The committee approves sending the proposed ordinance to be considered at city council on August 20th. This is Rich Samuels for L.A. this week.
For the first time in our city's history, an L.A. council member has sworn in at the Watts Towers. Anna Marcos has the latest as Joe Buscaino rings in his first full term in office.
Councilmember Joe Buscaino's swearing in under the Watts Towers turned into a mega celebration.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
A council member has never been sworn in in Watts.
Buscaino arrived to the party on a bike, accompanied by the East Side Riders and Los Riders Bike Clubs of Watts. Hundreds of residents from both Watts and San Pedro came to soak in the ambiance. The food and decorations with a definite Italian feel in honor of Buscaino's heritage, but the entertainment was definitely multi-ethnic. There were drums, booty shaking, and city leaders in Mexican sombreros trying out the baile tapatio. Don't tell Joe, but we think Mayor Eric Garcetti has got him beat on this one.
Look around right now at the people that Joe Buscaino walks with. They come from every part of this earth. They're every color, every age, every gender.
Though I am very proud to be a lifelong San Pedrin, I represent the entire district and the affection I have for Watts is very real.
In spite of the lighthearted party atmosphere, Buscaino is ready to roll up his sleeves and get to the serious business of running a district that includes L.A.'s world-class seaport and the most humble housing developments in Watts. This will be his first full term after taking over the spot left open by Janice Hahn when she became a U.S. Congresswoman.
My number-one goal while in office in this district is to lead the city in job growth from San Pedro to Watts. And we're moving forward on waterfront redevelopment. We're adding park space, economic development, making sure we're safe. If people aren't safe in my district, they're not going to want to live here, invest here.
And for the former cop, nothing warms his heart more than seeing Watts crime figures going down. He plans to invest some $18 million in Watts in the next few years. Some improvements are already underway.
I think that's what the residents of Los Angeles want. They want all their council members to act like senior lead officers. If there's a problem, they want them to be problem solvers. They want them to show up at their community meetings, at their neighborhood council meetings.
We need to, again, celebrate the fact that we have a safer Watts. Watts has not been safe this safe in decades. We need to celebrate that.
For today at least, they are celebrating before the hard work of running the district begins. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Next week, reporter Anna Marcos will bring us a special report from Councilman Joe Buscaino's 15th district on the positive changes taking place in Watts. Just seven months ago, the L.A. City Council reaffirmed its policy of ticketing cars that parked at broken parking meters. The policy was so widely criticized that this week, the city council voted to rescind that policy.
Open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
In a unanimous vote, the Los Angeles City Council voted to allow drivers to park at broken meters without the risk of being ticketed. Up until now, drivers face fines if they parked at a broken meter. City Councilman Mike Bonin introduced the motion to reverse the law.
Technology has given us an opportunity now to erase and rescind a policy that most people in Los Angeles thinks punishes them.
Critics say the motion will encourage vandalism of the meters. That's why city council members agreed to revisit their decision in six months in case vandalism of parking meters increases. Proponents say the new meters, which take coins and credit cards, are much more reliable than the old coin-operated meters.
We have almost no broken meters, and when a meter breaks, we are notified almost immediately and they're repaired generally within two hours.
I support strongly Mr. Bonin's effort to rectify this perceived unfairness that people, you know, are rightly upset about.
The L.A. City Council also voted 12 to 1 in opposition to Assembly Bill 61, which prevents local municipalities from approving ordinances that ticket vehicles at inoperable meters. That bill, sponsored by Assemblyman Mike Gatto, was passed in July.
The Gatto bill, which drove our responding to this, which I appreciate, and Mike Gatto is a very good friend, I think gives us no flexibility. If it turns out there is significant vandalism and we want to respond, we can't if that bill passes.
Assembly Bill 61 is now waiting Governor Brown's signature. Since the beginning of the year, the L.A. Department of Transportation says only six meters have broken down out of nearly 38,000 citywide. Learning softball from an Olympic gold medalist and providing housing for communities in need. It's just some of the stories this week on City Beat. First District Councilmember Gil Sadio recently gave United States Housing and Urban Development Secretary Sean Donovan a tour of the MacArthur Park Metro Apartments. The transit-oriented development recently marked the completion of its first phase, which includes 90 large family units, 15,000 feet of ground-floor retail, and 100 parking spaces for metro commuters. The second phase of the project will break ground in December directly above the MacArthur Park Red Line Station. Fourteenth District Councilmember Jose Wezar announced plans for a new downtown Whole Foods Market at Carmel Partners' new luxury apartment project on Grand Avenue. The 42,000-square-foot store is the first downtown location for the supermarket chain which specializes in natural and organic foods. Wezar said that downtown Los Angeles is like a city within a city that needs a diverse range of services, including grocery stores. Wezar added that bringing Whole Foods to downtown is long-awaited news that represents a major coup for the area and is an investment in this rapidly growing urban market. In partnership with the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Natasha Watley Softball League is now in its sixth year. Watley, the two-time Olympic gold medalist and professional softball player, is teaching over 170 girls the fundamentals of the game.
What it is, is a softball league for girls in South L.A. and at all the recreation centers from the city of Los Angeles Recreation and Parks, who also provide the fields that we play on and also they provide all of the girls.
Besides teaching the game, the softball league has other objectives as well.
They're learning life skills. They're learning how to work with other people, working how to have teammates, how to communicate, learning leadership skills. They're learning, you know, how to compete and how to have fun.
The Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs says it has received a grant from the National Endowment of the Arts toward the creation of affordable artist housing in the downtown arts district. The $75,000 grant will provide access to affordable housing for artists and create a strategy that could be used in other communities. Downtown L.A.'s Art District is a former industrial area that now includes performing and visual arts organizations, museums, and sound stages. Los Angeles is home to more working artists than any other city in the U.S. Old Fire Station 7 in Panorama City is getting a huge makeover. Rasha Goel has the latest on the positive changes taking place.
Los Angeles officials recently broke ground on the site of the new Fire Station Number 7. The new 16,000-square-foot facility will serve the communities of Panorama City and Arlita.
Groundbreaking is long overdue.
This station's going to be seven times as large, going to be able to handle 16 firefighters and paramedics and engine captains here at this station. What's great about it, they can be male, they can be female, it doesn't matter anymore, and that's wonderful.
The new Fire Station Number 7 will be replacing this old Fire Station Number 7, which was built in 1950 and known as the Little House. The new station is going to be one of 19 fire stations being replaced through funding by a voter-approved proposition.
Station 7 will not only allow our firefighters to do the best job that they can be, but it also represents the strengths and the values of our great city: environmental sustainability, superior service, and effective government. When you look at people thinking about government being late and over budget, we're on time and under budget.
We're doing something right in city government. Measure F is how we were able to build this station, are going to be able to build this station, but it wasn't even on the schedule. And we're not only going to build this station, but we're going to build the second station in my district to relieve the fire station on Silver. So thank you very much to the voters.
Officials say Fire Station Number 7 will better help serve the needs of a growing community.
This is going to be a public safety hub out here in the city of Panorama, a place where we can have those CERT meetings, those Community Emergency Response Meetings, where people in the neighborhood can come in, ring the doorbell, and learn about public safety.
We're going to be able to respond quicker out of there, more creature comforts, better be able to train and stuff. We've been in this Little House, going from, I think, what are we, like 1,700 square feet to 7,800 square feet of space.
Fire Station Number 7 is anticipated to open in 2015. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
There's already plenty of excitement for the 2015 Special Olympics World Games that will be held right here in Los Angeles. As Gil Reyes reports, the President and First Lady will serve as honorary chairs for this international extravaganza.
With these very special athletes cheering on, L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti says let the games begin in 2015. We're talking about the Special Olympics World Games to be held in Los Angeles.
It's an honor and a privilege for L.A. to host these games, because L.A. is a city of hope, opportunity, and inclusion.
Mayor Garcetti and company making the announcement here at L.A. Memorial Coliseum, one of several venues in the city of Los Angeles hosting the event. Others include USC, UCLA, and Griffith Park. President Barack Obama and First Lady Michelle Obama will serve as honorary chairpersons. The hope is they'll be here at the Coliseum for opening ceremonies.
Here at the White House, we're already looking forward to the 2015 Special Olympics World Games in Los Angeles. The athletes coming to these games represent the grit and determination that's at the very root of the American spirit. They keep working when the challenges seem greatest. They see opportunity where some see limitations. They represent the very best of the human spirit.
The games to be held in July and August of 2015 are expected to pump more than $400 million into the local economy, much of it from tourism. Over half a million spectators and athletes are expected. But the race is on to raise $90 million to host the event. So far, organizers are 17 percent of their goal.
We need a lot of support. Anybody out there could contribute. It's not paid by taxpayers' dollars. It's all privately funded, but it'll be a wonderful event for very special people.
Just ask 80-time gold medal winner Debbie Anderson. The softball, gymnastics, and track-and-field standout now sits on the L.A. Special Olympics Board of Directors.
One thing that I have learned from Special Olympics is that nothing is impossible.
When you believe in yourself. At the L.A. Memorial Coliseum, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The Special Olympics were founded by Eunice Kennedy Shriver in the 1960s. Here in Los Angeles, over 7,000 athletes will compete in 26 Olympic-style events. This week, you can take in movies, sock puppets, or Shakespeare. And if you've got plenty of free time, well, you can do all three. Rich Samuels has all the details in this week's Things to Do.
This Friday and Saturday in Griffith Park, it's Shakespeare As You Like It. It's the latest installment of the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival. As You Like It is one of Shakespeare's most popular comedies, about a kingdom in chaos, but a place where the force of love reigns supreme. It all begins both days at 7:00 p.m. in the Old Zoo near 4730 Crystal Springs Drive. Remember, this is outside and there's no seating, so bring a blanket or a low-back chair. On Saturday, there's even a workshop for kids, starting at 5:00 p.m. For more information, visit ISCLA.org. It's Girls Night Out at the Warner Grand in San Pedro with a screening of Les Miserables, the classic tale of Jean Valjean, young Cosette, and political turmoil in France during a time of revolution. The Girls Night Out program features films that look at life from a feminine perspective. The screening starts at 8:00 p.m., so be sure to take in dinner at one of San Pedro's excellent local restaurants before enjoying an extraordinary evening. The Warner Grand is located in San Pedro at 478 West Sixth Street. Admission is only $4.00 in advance and $6.00 on-site. For more information, visit GrandVision.org. This Friday evening, starting at 6:30 p.m., enjoy an outdoor screening of Safety Last, the classic 1923 Harold Lloyd silent movie featuring Lloyd hanging from the hands of a giant clock above the busy streets of Los Angeles. The screening is presented as part of Oscars Outdoors on the Hollywood campus of the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences. Also featured, a montage of Hollywood-signed cameos throughout movie history. The Academy Hollywood Campus is located at 1341 Vine Street in Hollywood. For more information, visit Oscars.org. The Autry Museum partners with American Girl to celebrate Sage, their 2013 Girl of the Year, whose stories show her love for horses and the arts. Discover your own artistic skills with an outdoor sketching workshop with lined horses, and then enjoy a 2:30 p.m. screening of the new feature film, Sage Paints the Sky. Admission to the program is included with a standard museum admission. The Autry National Center is located at 4700 Western Heritage Way in Griffith Park. For more information, visit theautry.org. This Sunday, celebrate L.A.'s rich diversity by enjoying the Ecuadorian Festival and Parade. The parade starts at 11:00 a.m. on Broadway and Seventh Street, ending at Alvera Street in a grand festival, featuring Ecuadorian cuisine, arts and crafts, musical groups, and folklore. There's also carnival games, free health screenings, and community services and information. The Alvera Street activities start at 12 noon and last until 6:00 p.m. Admission is free. Alvera Street is located at the intersection of Main Street and Cesar Chavez Avenue. For more information, call 213-361-6008. This Sunday at 3:00 p.m., the Sock Puppet Sitcom Theater comes to California Plaza with a reimagining of the classic Cinderella, including laugh tracks, a Foley artist, and commercial breaks. You're even encouraged to come dressed in your own fantastical costume. This is one great performance you won't forget. California Plaza is located at 350 South Grand Avenue in downtown L.A. For more information, visit GrandPerformances.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
Over the last decade, the population of people living in downtown has climbed from 10,000 to 50,000. That means plenty of new businesses are popping up all over. Rich Samuels takes us on a tour of Peddler's Creamery.
Gears turn and wheels spin powered not by electricity, but by human power, put to work churning ice cream at Peddler's Creamery in downtown L.A.
One of the things that excites me the most about representing downtown L.A. is to see new businesses that cater to people who live, work, and play in downtown L.A.
Peddler's Creamery provides organic dairy and non-dairy ice cream and frozen desserts, all with an eye toward balancing profit, planet, and people equally.
We make bicycle-churned organic ice cream, which is kind of the fun thing to do. And that's the unique feature as well. So we have people that help out pedaling all of our bikes, all of our ice creamers to say, using a bicycle. We make it here in the shop and then we serve it up to people.
For customers, hopping on the bike isn't just good exercise, it means rewards, too.
Now we also have this peddler's club, so you can join the club. You can come in here, you can pedal a batch, it's a little less than 20-minute shift, and then in exchange, you get a scoop of ice cream. And then as you kind of build up miles, you know, then you can get like other rewards. So you can get like a t-shirt, you can get a hat.
Even Councilman Jose Wezar hopped on a bike and got into the act, suggesting one more benefit Peddler's Creamery brings to downtown.
This is fun, because you get to burn off the calories that you eat off the ice cream.
This is Rich Samuels for L.A. this week.
As part of its commitment to the community, Peddler's Creamery also lets customers know where its food is grown. Well, that's going to do it for this week's show. Thanks for joining us. I'm Brian Ojima. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for another edition of L.A. this week. So long, everybody.
Having the foresight to plan for my business...
To plan for my future...
To plan for my family...
Provides peace of mind.
Having the foresight to sign up for Alert LA County...
Gives me that peace of mind when an incident happens close to my home...
Or near my park.
Alert LA County is a free automated system which sends out information about emergency events via telephone, text, and email. Events may include disasters, evacuations, and safety notices. Register at alert.lacounty.gov.
Alert LA County.
Knowing when you need it most.
Every day, our brave troops and their families stand up for us.
For years, we've asked so much of so few.
Now, we have a chance to serve these heroes.
To give time, offer comfort, or lend a hand.
To ease the burden on a military family.
Let's honor their service by volunteering ours.
G'day, Troy McCubbin from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning. It's Friday, August 9th. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. If you'd like to say a few words, there are speaker cards in the back. You fill that out, give it to one of our sergeants, and we'll call you up at the appropriate time. If you just want to see your local government work, then you're welcome to be here. With that said, we don't have a quorum right now, but we can still begin with the presentation portion of today's meeting. And I'd like to call on Mr. Felipe Fuentes to begin today's presentations.
Thank you, Mr. President, members, and Mr. Wezar for noting that this is the first presentation of my council career. Thank you, sir. Members of the council, I am very honored today to be here today with the 2013 Sunland Art Day Games, folks. Where are my organizers? Come on up and stand up here. Come on, join me up here at the center podium. Last year, the 7th Council District became the local home of the Art Day Games. They take place this year on August 9th and provide free access to the work of local artists. These games are very similar to the Olympics but focus on the arts. This year, the Art Day Games include a short script competition and a visual arts competition. But I'm not sure if all of you know, but the 7th Council District, in particular, Sunland de Hanga, is the scene of a burgeoning arts community in the San Fernando Valley. Whether it's the mural mile in Pacoima, or the poets in Sunland de Hanga, or the Magrory Arts Center, the 7th Council District is very exciting in terms of what it's contributing to the arts community in Los Angeles today. It's great to have community events like the Art Day Games that promote creativity and community development for all of the residents. And I wanted to take some time today to acknowledge some of the people and organizations that made this event possible. Rebecca Mait is with us today. She's a Sunland resident and founder of the Art Day, and today's Art Day Games, or rather the Art Day Games that are going to be held, are going to be held at her home. So give her a big round of applause for opening up her home. We're also joined today with Candace Sorensen. She's the Executive Director of the Magrory Arts Center and the Magrory Arts Center Board of Directors. Marlene Hitt and Joe De Senzo and Dorothy Skiles, past and present poet laureates of Sunland de Hanga, are with us today. And I wanted to invite Ms. Rebecca Mait up to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Fuentes. And I told a Sunland artist named Claudia Chicas that you were doing this proclamation, and she said normally she doesn't follow politics, but since she sees you support the arts, she'll pay attention to you. She made some happy Art Day greeting cards for the council and their staff, and I had some from prior years. So here are the greeting cards.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, they say happy Art Day inside. I tell people that Art Day is like Arbor Day or Valentine's Day, but instead of hugging a tree or hugging your sweetheart, you hug an artist. This year, I bought a painting and poetry for Art Day. What if everybody did that? Last year in Sunland, we began the Art Day Games. Artists played for the country where they were born, where they live, or where a parent was born. Last year, Dorothy Skiles, poet laureate of Sunland de Hanga, produced the live poetry competition. And USA took gold and silver, and Sweden took the bronze. And an artist in India named Nenu Vich produced a visual arts live event and show and had underprivileged children drawing in her garden for Art Day. As we speak, there are screenwriters participating in the short script competition of Art Days, and they have to get a five-page script to me today by 6:00 because awards are at 7:00, like these medals. The visual arts competition this year in Sunland is being judged by author and singer-songwriter Barbara Joy Cordova. She's having contestants create drawings based on "Get High on Art, Say No to Drugs." And Art Day is about recognizing the arts and artists of all disciplines as cultural leaders, as trendsetters. Look at the trends that Hollywood and the music industry set around the world. And arts are in advance and set the trends. That's why cutting the arts from the schools or our lives is like cutting off someone's So I want to thank Councilman Fuentes. And I also wanted to have Candace Sorensen, one of our sponsors of the Art Day Games. She's the Executive Director of Magrory Arts Center, say something.
Just very quickly, thank you so much. Thank you to Councilmember Fuentes for supporting the arts, for being a supporter of the arts. I'm fairly new to the city of Los Angeles and my position. I have been in arts education my entire adult life, and even as a small child, and it's just overwhelming that the support that we get. Keep coming to events, keep supporting the arts. Thank you. Now, I'd like to quickly introduce Dorothy Stiles, who is our poet laureate.
Thank you very much, Annette. I'm very happy today to be here and that the council has recognized the importance of Art Day in Los Angeles. Arts are very much alive in Los Angeles and in our community at Sunland de Hanga. We have the Village Poets of Sunland de Hanga. We have events monthly. People from the community gather together, and they have an evening of poetry. And we've been doing this for several years. Our event for this August is the 24th of August at 4:30 at the Magrory Arts Center, and you're welcome. Again, thank you, Councilmember Fuentes, and thank you. Happy Art Day.
Happy Art Day. Give them a big round of applause, everybody. Next, we're going to bring up the folks from Bolton Hall. I know we've got a little crossover, so let's bring the folks from Bolton Hall, and then we'll have our Art Day folks stand behind them so we make them stronger. Come on up, everybody. Now, this one's very exciting, just like the Art Day colleagues. We are celebrating the 100th birthday of one of our city's greatest hidden gems, Bolton Hall. Where's Mr. Labange? Which number historic building is that, Mr.?
Seventeen.
Number two, Mr. Kocorian is absolutely correct. Bolton Hall is a real treasure of the 7th Council District. In 1913, members, settlers moved onto an acre and a half acre lots, calling themselves Little Landers. In April of that year, Bolton Hall was built using rocks gathered from the local hillsides and from the de Hanga watch. Mr. Kocorian is very familiar with that part of town. Bolton Hall has been a cornerstone of Sunland and de Hanga, having once served as a place for town meetings, church services, socials, and dances. And at one point, the Department of Recreation and Parks had actually held a permit to demolish the building, if you could all imagine that. But fortunately, in 1962, a second structure to... This structure was the second one in the city of Los Angeles to earn a city historical monument, second to the Adobe in Alvera Street, which was the first.
And the third was Saint Viviana's.
And the third was Saint Viviana's in 1967 by the Little Landers Society. So we're very grateful for them doing that. In 1980, Bolton Hall reopened with the help of the Little Landers Historical Society and currently houses artifacts, photographs, documents, memorabilia of Sunland de Hanga and the foothill area, and really of Southern California. They gave a great presentation just the other day when we were there, and it really helped us understand what a gem it is to not just Sunland de Hanga but to Los Angeles. I wanted to take some time to acknowledge some of the people and organizations that made this event possible. We're joined today with Sherri Smith, who's the president of the Little Landers Historical Society, Marlene Hitt, corresponding secretary, Lloyd Hitt, and Brenda Fortune from the Bolton Hall Centennial Committee, and many of their docents. Let's give them a big round of applause as we introduce Sherri Smith.
I want to thank you, Councilmember Fuentes, for this wonderful honor. And I... Do you want to announce what the award is, or do you want me to?
You announce.
Councilmember Fuentes and the city council have awarded Bolton Hall with a Bolton Hall Day in Los Angeles, August 10th, 2013. And that is tomorrow. And tomorrow, we're holding a very special rededication program at Bolton Hall. And you all are invited. It's at 4:00 PM in the afternoon, and we're gathering on the north lawn, and we're going to have a wonderful program and some special surprises. And Councilmember Fuentes and his family will be there. In fact, his daughter's going to be part of the program. We're very happy about that. And we thank you all very much for this wonderful honor. It's quite an honor, it really is, to recognize Bolton Hall's 100 years of service to the community. And again, we thank you.
All right. Give them a big round of applause, everybody. All right, we're going to go take some photos. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Fuentes, if you could wait one moment. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Mr. Fuentes for bringing the leaders of Sunland de Hanga here for two really important events that kind of symbolize a lot of what Sunland de Hanga is about. This is a community that offers so much to the richness of Los Angeles, both historically and culturally. And not enough people, I think, know how rich Sunland de Hanga is in both of those areas. And maybe it's better kept that way. Maybe it should remain our hidden secret. But being here to talk about Art Day, and of course, the Magrory Arts Center, such an important part of the cultural backbone of this city, housed in the home of John Magrory, the first poet laureate of the state of California, a member of Congress, and still to this day, enriching the artistic fabric of that community by offering so many classes and opportunities for the community together. And then, of course, Bolton Hall, one of the most important historical spots, I think, in the San Fernando Valley and surrounding areas, because it is a marker of those early pioneers of the area. And again, it continues to be an essential part of that community. So this is really one of the great examples of how we connect to our past and how this community continues to give so much to Los Angeles. So I just want to thank you, Mr. Fuentes, for showcasing the great richness of this community, and thank you all for being down. Here, I miss you all.
Mr. President, if we could just make a short introduction here?
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to call attention to some of the members of our board, some other members of our board in our Centennial Committee that are here. Lloyd Hitt is chairman of our Centennial Committee and has been hard at work for about a year and a half now. He got started on all of our preparations very early. And Lloyd is also a past president of Little Landers. And Lloyd and Marlene Hitt are Bolton Hall and Little Landers person. I've been involved in many, many years with the organization. This is Lloyd, and Marlene, and... And Bill Skiles as well, who is our photo archivist. And Bill is a member of the board and also has been involved with Little Landers for many years. Bill? And Joe De Senzo, who's on our Centennial Committee and has been helping us with all of our Centennial preparations this year, and has been a wonderful addition to our presentations. You'll see him tomorrow as well. And Brenda Fortune, who's also a member of the Centennial Committee. And has helped us, again, with many of the preparations. It takes a village, and we are definitely a village. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Okay, at this point, I'd like to call on Mr. Wezar. It's my understanding we have some very important guests with us today. Jose?
Mr. President, and with us today is a number of people with heritage from Ecuador, and we have visitors from Ecuador delegation who came to visit the council chambers. They are with us here today to celebrate Ecuador's 204th Year of Independence, which is tomorrow, August 10th, and they are celebrating it with a parade down Broadway. Begins on 7th and Broadway. You're all welcome, and I want to give a big hello and welcome to Council General Eddie Bedon, who's with us each and every year. Welcome. Let's give him a big round of applause.
Let's give the council general a round of applause.
And to all the other mayors, artists, and people from Ecuador, thank you for being here today. Bienvenidos y felicidades por su independencia de su país maravilloso. Gracias.
Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, Buscayino, Cityo, Anglader, Fuentes, Wezar, Carras, Kocorian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. 14 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves, O'Farrell seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Kocorian moves, Bloomingfield seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to items scheduled on today's agenda.
Well, let's go through the agenda.
Very good, sir.
First set of items, items 1 through 8.
Items 1 through 6 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
We have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items, all items except for number 5, sir.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on item 5. Members, anyone wanting to call 5 special, seeing none? Let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, next section of items?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations.
All righty then. Let us call on my dear friend and Assistant President Protem, who I don't see yet. There he is, hustling his way to the center aisle, Mr. Tom Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
With a very special guest...
Very special guest that we have.
Who's not a stranger in this house, Mr. Labange.
Not a stranger.
Make sure everybody knows that.
We have here this morning the mayor of our oldest sister city, the mayor of Nagoya. Please welcome Mayor Karawawa. Also joining us today is Tom Gilmore, who is the head of all of our sister city programs. And also, we have here the very special chief of all... Perigal Weingberger is our chair of the Nagoya City. She came to Los Angeles over 30 years ago, and she is much involved with life in Little Tokyo. Mr. Wezar, please join me for this very special program, because this is Nise Week, as Lisa Schechter will tell you. And that is Nise Week, there's a big parade this Sunday in Little Tokyo. Our sister city has been together for 54 years. It's located in Nagoya in the central part of Japan. It is its number one port. And we have Norman Arakawa right here, who's our great man for the Port of Los Angeles, who's helped develop business and trade, both in Nagoya, Japan, to import here to Los Angeles in the Southern California area, as well as exporting here from Los Angeles. Our mayor was first elected in 2009, and he is in his term for another term through 2013. He visited Los Angeles, he loves Los Angeles. We were in Hollywood yesterday, Mitch. We were up in the valley yesterday checking things out. He wanted to know about the process of government, how to be successful, how each of you do your jobs, which was very interesting to hear. And he also wanted to know about the Ethics Commission, which I gave him full chapter and verse. So all that is so important. We want to welcome him here because they come every year, and he's a special man. And also with him today is the vice chairperson, Mr. President, Noriko Obama, right here. She's the vice chair of the Assembly of Nagoya. Give them a big hand as well. And the mayor, always being the gentleman, wants the vice chair to speak first. Thank you. After he speaks.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to meet Mr. Hal J. Wesson Jr. and everyone gathered here today. and everyone gathered here today. I'm Takashi Kamura, the mayor of Nagoya, Los Angeles city's sister city in Japan. Nagoya and Los Angeles began a sister affiliation in 1959, and we have deepened our friendship over this half-century. And I've got to say one important thing. This is not written here, that just after we began the sister city affiliation, the great typhoon, Easter Bay Typhoon, hit the city of Nagoya, and people, over 5,000 lost their lives. And Los Angeles gave me a big help for us. So Nagoya people, never forget, and very thankful for you all. Never forget, okay? Appreciation, big appreciation, feel appreciation for you, okay? Our two cities conduct a variety of exchange activities together, including a high school exchange program that has continued since the year after our cities' sister city affiliation began. And recently, we have began new exchanges, such as research on the educational system of Los Angeles and the basketball exchange program. Next year makes 55th anniversary of our city sister city affiliation. I look forward to celebrating this special year commemorating the year, many years of our exchange together with UN to further strengthen our long-lasting friendship into the future. I hope to continue to receive your support and cooperation. Thank you for your association. Thank you very much.
And now, the vice mayor, Noriko Baba.
皆さんこんにちは。
Good morning. I am Noriko Baba, vice chairperson of the Nagoya City Assembly. I would like to express my deepest gratitude to the members of the Los Angeles City Council for making time during your busy schedules to give such a warm welcome to the Nagoya City Assembly delegation today. On behalf of the Nagoya City Assembly, I am honored to have the opportunity to be able to speak at this historic city council chamber. So we have been here in America since August 4. And the day before we left for America, we had the Nagoya City Children's Assembly. So we left after that assembly and arrived here in America and then moved to Los Angeles. So I hope that the children of Nagoya will be able to see this meeting, and hopefully that they will be able to carry that over to their generation as well. So I would like to introduce other members joining me today from the Nagoya City Assembly who represent different parties. This is Assemblyman Mr.幸樹坂野。Next is Assemblyman Mr. Masaya服部。
続きまして、ホッタ大木議員でございます。
And next is Assemblyman Mr.大木ホッタ。And lastly, this is Assemblyman Mr.真二木下。So we come from the same district, so we are good rivals. Since the establishment of the sister city relationship between the cities of Nagoya and Los Angeles, it has been over 50 years since our two cities developed a mutual understanding in various fields such as culture, education, and economics, and also, as you have mentioned, the ports. It is our hope that Los Angeles and Nagoya will be able to create long-lasting bonds so that our children and grandchildren will be able to celebrate the 100th and even 200th anniversaries in the future. Also, by continuing to foster the relationship between our cities, I would also like to announce that we have restored the Nagoya Castle's Honmaru Goden this year. So we would like to invite all of you to come and visit the beautiful Nagoya and see the restored castle. So may I conclude my speech by thanking you all again. And we look forward to your continued support in strengthening this friendship between our two cities so that we will be able to continue this, because Nagoya has a history of over 400 years. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You see the deepness, the deepness of Nagoya and their involvement? Mr. Weezer is leading us on Sunday in the Nise Parade. Please invite everybody.
Thank you very much, Labange, and thank you for all the work you do, not only in our sister city relationship with Nagoya, but all our sister cities. And this Sunday, we have the Nise Week here in Little Tokyo. We invite you all to come out. It's in the afternoon, and it is a longstanding tradition here in the city of Los Angeles. I am proud to represent Little Tokyo in the council, and also Boyle Heights, which once had the largest concentration of Japanese-Americans here in the United States. And we continue traditions in Boyle Heights and Little Tokyo of some of the first arrivals from Japan, and this relationship, Nagoya, continues that. We not only have this great sister city relationship, but our commerce is very similar, the two cities. Where we stand in relation to the rest of the country is very similar. So we want to continue this relationship for many years to come. Welcome, Mayor, to the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Weezer, thank you very much. And finally, to close, Mr. President, I don't know if you watch the international channel, but our mayor here was the number one on Mayor's Got Talent. And Kenny, if you could roll it right now, this is the number one singing mayor in the world right now, who's going to sing a very special song together. Here we go, Kenny. The theme. Higashikobu. It's a long song, okay? Mayor Gilmore, thank you very much. That was Hughes Sakamoto, number one hit. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Mr. Supervisor, good to see you, Mr. Supervisor.
Good to see you again, Mayor. Good to see you.
Thank you so much. Another big hand for Nagoya, Japan, our number one sister city.
Okay, as we move forward, I would like to ask Channel 35 to do a wide shot of where I am, because I have a very important introduction. So let's widen the shot. All right. To my right is a very close friend of mine, since 1987, has chosen to visit with us today. It's the former councilman and current supervisor, Zev Yaroslavsky. Give him a round of applause. A good man and a good leader for this region for many years. Mr. Joey B., it's my understanding you have a couple of announcements or introductions.
Thank you, Mr. President. And welcome, Mr. Supervisor. Thanks for being here. We have with us Sergio. Stand on up, Sergio. Sergio, get the wide shot here. An amazing young man out of Harbor City, California, and is very active in student government, is now moving on to sixth grade at Dotson Middle School. This kid's amazing, Paul, let me tell you. He has a book drive that donates his own books to the local police station for kids who are taken into police custody. And he will be sitting in this chair one of these days. And Sergio, I just want to let you know, we love you, we're proud of you, and your mom and dad are so proud of you. And it starts with mom and dad, and make sure you thank mom and dad. So thank you for being here. He's our council member of the day. And let's give Sergio a round of applause, representing Harbor City. And he spent some time with Mr. Sadio, Mr. Bonn in here, and they are too really impressed by what he's done in our community. Also, our last day, our intern, Selena and Alex, come on up, from the ITEP program in Wilmington at Banning High School International Trade Education Program. This is our last day interning with our office and working hand-in-hand with Gabby Medina in doing field operations. So Alex and Selena, we love you and thank you so much for your service, and we wish you the best of luck at Banning High School. Thank you. That's right. And I think our last introduction here, we have a number of graduates, or this is our last day. Where's my cue on this? From the Public Works. Where are we at? In fact, let me get my... Oh, this is it right here. 2013 Public Works High School Internship Program, Channel 35, if you can get a wide shot, please stand. They're joining us here. It's their culmination day of their five-week program. Please give them a round of applause. Our Public Works High School Internship Program. Thank you. We love you, we're proud of you. Good luck to you in the coming school year. That's it. Back to you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer, are you ready? Mr. Weezer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President and colleagues in public, I have a very special guest with me here today, and she's here in these council chambers to be recognized for the work she has done not only in Mexico, but in the United States as well. And I'm talking about a true pioneer, the Mexican telenovela producer Carla Estrada. And when I say pioneer, I mean a real trial book blazer. Mrs. Estrada is an extremely talented and accomplished woman who has the distinction of being the first woman producer in Mexican television history. And she didn't just crack the glass ceiling, but Mrs. Estrada shattered it. As she stands here before you today, she not only has the distinction of being the first woman television producer, she is considered by many today to be the best producer, male or female, of telenovelas in Mexico and indeed, the world. She has been named one of People Magazine's and Espanol's 100 Most Influential Latinos in the World. She is an icon figure to the Mexican people, and we are deeply honored to have her here this morning, so the people of Los Angeles can congratulate her and her incredible career. Carla Estrada not only created a successful three-year career in Mexico through Televisa, she also dominated the telenovela industry here in the United States, working with Univision. In 2003, Carla Estrada's telenovela, Amor Real, shocked the world by receiving higher ratings than all the other television shows in the United States, putting Univision ratings above English-language networks such as NBC and ABC. As you might imagine, the list of recognitions and awards that Carla Estrada has received are endless. She has received literally hundreds of awards in Mexico and other Latin American countries in recognition of her work. If all she ever did was produce the very best telenovelas for all of us to enjoy, that would be enough. But Carla Estrada's compassion and empathy for others less fortunate led her to incorporate groundbreaking donation and social activism programs directly tied to the shows she has produced. By doing so, she has helped feed thousands of children and homeless individuals, given assistance to mothers with AIDS and their newborn babies, created an environmental and clean water awareness program in Mexico, and helped families retrieve lost and abducted children, just to name a few of her activities. Carla Estrada is truly a woman to admire, a producer to admire, and someone we can all thank for her work that she does for her fellow human beings. She is a wife, a mother, and a friend to many, a hero to the Mexican people, and somebody we can all look up to here in Los Angeles. And with that, I want to give her a warm welcome to the city of Los Angeles and a recognition, thanking her not only for the work she has done in telenovelas, but her work on behalf of other human beings. Felicidades, Carla, y bienvenida a la ciudad de Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. It's an honor for me to be here. And thank you, Jose Weezer. Thank you, the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, the city hall. I promise to do my best effort in my work and for my Mexico. Thank you.
Ah, great speech. Mr. Weezer, beautiful program. Let's just get some good pictures right there.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We'll be back to take photos with Carla Estrada, and there's a number of people here from both the United States and Mexico who've come to visit. So we invite you all to the back room as well. Come take some photos with Carla Estrada. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sergeants, if you could help there, that'd be very great. What a nice program. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. I'd like to call on the president of the city council, Mr. Herb Wesson. All right, thank you very much, Sergeants. As we could, Mr. Wesson? As we could, Mr. Wesson, please.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Today, I have two presentations. One, I hope, is a very quick one, and the other one may take a little more time. But we have with us today a poodle, about five or six years old, named Oreo, correct?
Yes.
Oreo is looking for a home. It says here he has some training. Is he ready to go home with a happy family today?
Yes. Yes, and he was turning, he's an owner surrender because his parents divorced.
He's an owner surrender because his parents, unfortunately divorced, and we have a 100% adoption record for our dogs, competing with LA County and Supervisor Mike Antonovich in particular. We want to keep that record going. We will be in the back with Oreo. If you have an interest, please call, please come in the back, see him. He's a real nice fella and very dapper in his summer cut. This beautiful charcoal gray color that he has. I just know that I would be living in the driveway if I brought home another dog, but he's definitely worth consideration. So, city employees, people that are here today, let's give Oreo a new home. He will give you unconditional love, and that's something that you just can't put a price tag to. So, help us keep our 100% adoption rate and take this little pooch home with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Oreo will be in the back, waiting for his new mom or dad. I'd like to ask my dear friend, since 1987, to join me, a man that I first met in these chambers, he and Richard Alatorre were playing catch with a tennis ball. That's before Channel 35. The two of them were right over, no, maybe right over here, playing catch back and forth, and they do it for hours. And then all of a sudden, we got Channel 35 and all of that changed. And he became the distinguished gentleman from the West Side and no longer the tennis ball champion of the Los Angeles City Council. So please welcome Zev. We all just lovingly call him Zev. Zev Yaroslavsky, Supervisor of the Third District. We, as council members, I think, enjoy saluting people who have done a phenomenal job for our community or this city hall. But today, you know, I've got all of these great things to say, and I just don't know if I'm going to be able to do them justice, because this is a very bittersweet moment for me. It's bitter because I'm going to lose a person who personally means a lot to me, a person who has been unbelievably helpful to me and this council. But it's sweet because this young lady has a lifetime of putting other people before herself. And one of the reasons why she has decided to move on in life is because she wants to spend quality time with her dad as he's battling an illness. And I just pray that if that were to happen to me, that I would at least have one of my four sons that would want to do something as honorable and as just as that. So ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to ask to come up June Lagmay, our city clerk. Give it up. June has been a member of the city family for 32 years. And I really don't even think of her as a city clerk, I think of her as my friend, my occasional kiss on the cheek I get when she thinks I've done something good, or when she thinks I'm depressed and needs a kiss on the cheek. Like I said, she's been a staff person here for 32 years. There's a specialness about her. She and her partner, who I met July 1st, was it July 1st that I met you and your spouse? We were right here, yeah, at the mayor's swearing-in. They have been together for 40 years. Give 40 years a round of applause. I have friends where a long marriage is 40 days. We're talking 40 years. I didn't know until I read her bio that she worked for Peggy Stevenson and Gloria Molina, who served with Zev and did not throw a tennis ball. I think she could, but she didn't. June graduated cum laude, bachelor's degree in sociology from the University of California, She's worked for four mayors, Villarreal, Han Riordan, and now Garcetti, and has just workman-like worked her way up the ladder. And always with class and professionalism, whenever she needed anything, she would come to me. And June, I am so glad that I was able to help you more times than not, because one thing that government needs are more just good human souls, and June is definitely one. I will miss you tremendously. She came to my, there it is, came to my district office and swore me in in front of a crowd, always wants to make my life easier regardless of the stress and strain it puts on her department. So for me, this is personal. And again, I will miss her. I do think it's important that I say that she's been a leader where it relates to the LGBT Caucus and organization, and that she was upfront when it was not popular. And because of June, I think there are a lot of people, some of which seated around this horseshoe, that have been able to live the kind of life that they wanted and deserved to live because of people like June that said, "This is who I am, this is what I'm going to be. Love me, hate me, I'm moving forward." So, a special person, special daughter that we will miss, and before I cry or present you with a scroll, I'd like to ask another person who feels very fondly of you to come up and say a few words. Ladies and gentlemen, Zev Yaroslavsky.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the councils. Good to be back, it's been a while. And I don't usually come down here for any reason, but, and Friday mornings, I had my memory refreshed as to why that's the case, but I will be brief. I did want to come down today because June Lagmay has played a special role in my life, in the life of my staff, and my chief of staff is here, Alisa Belikov Katz. She's sitting up there next to her councilman. And back in the 80s, when I chaired the Finance Committee, June Lagmay was the Finance Committee clerk, and Alisa staffed me on the Finance Committee at the time. And as all of you know, and the new ones will know soon enough, the clerk can make you or break you. Either you have the information, yeah. And June, like so many of the other really good people in the clerk's office that we had the privilege of working with, was on top of, was ahead of me and ahead of the committee, and knew what we were going to need, and positioned us well to do our job in the time we had allotted to us. But the moment that I remember most of all was one day at the committee when we approved what came to be known, I guess, as domestic partner benefits. I don't know if we called it that at the time, but we extended benefits to same-sex partners and unmarried partners who've been with each other for an extended period of time, for bereavement leave, for health benefits, the whole nine yards. It was kind of revolutionary at the time. And when the committee finished unanimously recommending that ordinance to the full council, and the committee was breaking up, June came up to me at the end of the committee, says, "Can I have a personal word with you?" And I said, "Sure, what is it?" And she says, "Well, I've been living with my partner for," I don't remember what it was, "20 years or so, and this ordinance is going to make all the difference to us, and I just want to thank you for that." And so many of us get caught up in the hustle and bustle of legislation and getting things through and passed, but never really understand that it actually impacts real people, real lives, and in that case, that was what I call a lightbulb moment for me. And I was honored when Rita and June decided to marry a few years ago, and that window of opportunity presented itself, that she asked me to perform that marriage, and it's an honor that I will always remember and a day that I will always remember, almost as much as they will, if not more. So I wanted to come here today to, first of all, recognize June Lagmay's incredible 32-year career, which really took off after she left my committee, liberated from the shackles of the Finance Committee, and allowed to show her talents, and worked her way all the way to the top to be the city clerk of this great city, and did an excellent job as the city clerk, and continued to be responsive to our registrar, to me and to other members of our board when they had questions. And I want to thank you for your service to the city, June. You've earned your retirement. You're too young to do it, but you have good reasons for doing it. And I want to wish you and Rita all the happiness going forward. And on behalf of my staff, particularly Alisa Katz and myself, thank you for your professionalism with me and with us, but above all, for your friendship. And I wanted to present you with this proclamation from the Board of Supervisors. And I actually, all five supervisors agreed on this. This is amazing. We don't agree on very much. Even Molina signed this. I won't read it, but the board wanted to take this opportunity to thank you and commend you on your career with the city of Los Angeles, and wish you all the best in your retirement. Have a great retirement.
Thank you, Zev. Now, we have a resolution, June, from the city of LA, signed by the entire council. But there's one signature that is purposely missing, and that signature belongs to the city clerk. So I'm going to have you sign this. I mean, she's the one person that gets to sign stuff for herself.
Mr. President, we do have some members who want to speak.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll get that. Mr. Bonin?
Yeah, thank you.
Could I ask my staff to stand?
Please, staff, I should have done that.
Hey, Todd.
All of you.
All right, we got the staff right there. June, listen to Mr. Mike Bonin, Councilman of the 11th.
June, I'm going to miss you. You know, since the early retirement incentive program went into place a few years ago, hardly a week goes by when you don't get an email from a city employee who's leaving, and there've been hundreds of those over the past couple of years. None of them made me feel as sad or caused a pain in my heart like the one I got when you said you were leaving us. I have known you for a very long time in the city. I knew you through email for most of that time, and then I don't know that we actually met face to face until after Proposition 8 passed. And I got to know you not just as a city employee, but as a leader in the LGBTQ community. You are the epitome of quiet leadership, of humble service, of heart, and of good humor. There is not a time that we have been together where I haven't felt warmer and happier from being in your presence. I was so glad on April 29th of 2011, when I was able to go with my now fiance, Sean, down to your office to sign our domestic partnership and make that official. You were one of the lucky ones who got married before Prop 8 passed, and fortunately, Sean and I are going to have that opportunity again soon. And what I really admired about you is you had your marriage, but you fought as tirelessly and forcefully and aggressively for the rest of us to have our marriage rights, when we had that dark period of Prop 8 being in effect, and I'm incredibly grateful. You sent an email out in your farewell announcement, and you thanked your staff and the people you've worked with in the city. You said that it's the best staff in the entire city. You thanked folks for talent, innovation, humor, devotion, and friendship that will continue to inspire you for all the rest of your days. Right back at you, right back at you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. June, I wanted to also rise and acknowledge the tremendous work that you've given to the city of Los Angeles. I think, you know, having served myself as staff for a little time here in the city and in the legislature, I think the story isn't told enough about how important the people like you, the support staff that make the city of Los Angeles work, aren't acknowledged as much. And to have Mr. Yaroslavsky here today is a real testament, I think, to that end. You often hear about the names around this horseshoe, and they come and go, but there are legends in these hallowed halls: Comrie, Martinez, Tuttle, Deaton, and now Lagmay. Thank you for your service.
Councilman of the 50th District, Mr. Buscayno.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. June, I just want to stand also to congratulate you and your dedication to our city. In the short time I've been here, it feels like I've known you forever. And when you administered the oath here in front of my family and myself, those are the memories that I will cherish forever. And I want to say, when we had our No Hate photo shoot with the duct tape, and you were there, you were there, and you stood for the LGBT community, and the fact that you called up your staff just now was a testament to your commitment to the people that serve under you as well. To echo what Mike said, your humility has been really, it's been sown here, and it's contagious as well. And to know that you've been well-loved and well-received by your staff and your family and your city family, I want to stand and say, congratulations, we love you, God bless you. And in you, and enjoy your retirement. But come back and say hello. Thanks.
Thank you, our most newly-elected member of council, Councilwoman Martinez.
Hi, June. I'm not sure if you remember, but four years ago, I had the honor of having you swear me in when my daughter was four months old to the L.A. U.S.D. School Board. And as of last week, a week ago, you got to swear me in again as the last, as one of the last elected members in the city to get sworn in by you. So thank you so much. Our family wishes you all the best. And it was really great to work with you, and I was really honored that you were able to swear me in a week ago. So thank you so much, June.
Mr. Weezar.
Thank you. And, June, I rushed back here from the back where I was hosting some people from Mexico because I didn't want to miss this moment. You know, a lot of great things I've said, but I just think you committed yourself to the city, knowing that you had the city's public trust in your hands, and you did it with passion, you did it with careful attention to detail. God bless you for the work you've done. You're not only a great city clerk, but a great human being. Thank you so much for all you've done for us. Thank you.
And, Mr. President, Mr. O'Farrell.
June, this is my first regret as a city council member, that I didn't get to work with you. And I'm sure that I'll have many more, because there are so many stories similar to yours in their own way. And what you've done for the LGBT movement and just your quiet way of being so professional and living your life the way that you absolutely should be living your life has really made a difference for all of us, and I thank you for that. I also want to recognize you for your work on the Filipino Workers Association over the years. So you really are a legend, and you have been part or led so many wonderful movements over the past 32 years. So I tip my hat to you. And I know you're from Echo Park, you might even be a constituent, so please do call upon my office if you need anything as you return to being a private citizen. Congratulations, and you will be missed. Thank you for all your years of service.
Mr. Corretts of Mr. Yaroslavsky's old district, the 5th.
Yeah, so I always enjoy seeing Zev here, as he sometimes refers to me as his sign coordinator on his first campaign. I hate to say how long ago. I already did a shtick, which I enjoyed last night at your retirement, offering to swear you into your retirement. We all have to be grateful to you, because if you hadn't sworn us all in, we'd all be wandering around looking for somebody else to do it. And I just want to thank you for your dedication and your responsiveness and everything you've done for 32 years. You absolutely are a legend here in these halls, and we all love you and thank you for it.
Members, I wanted to rise from Mr. Weston's spot to say, "I love you, June. I love you," because we were in Room 317 together. I started, I was a few years ahead of you, right here with Councilwoman Peggy Stevenson. And I love the clerks, Mr. Weston, because our words may travel through a microphone and into the airspace, but the deeds that they record are what are the laws of the land of Los Angeles. And that's what keeps this building, this community. What a beautiful reception in the Tom Bradley Tower. Seen so many old friends. June, you're a remarkable individual, great retirement, great job, and thank you for letting me hang the old historic maps in the clerk's office so everybody could join. Let's give a big hand for June Lagme right now.
Honorable Council President Weston, honorable council members, honorable Supervisor Yaroslavsky. It's been a pleasure working with each of you. And I find the spirits and memories of many council members and past city attorneys and past controllers and past mayors in this chamber, some of whom have moved on to other offices and others who are no longer with us in this world. My special thanks to Mayor Bradley, under whom I did intern, Mayor Riordan, Mayor Hahn, Mayor Vierigosa, and Mayor Garcetti, who each respectively gave me the chance to develop my professional skills. To each and every staff member of the city clerk's office, you have done this office proud, and I have learned permanent life virtues from each of you. To my division heads, the management team of the clerk's office, Miranda and Rosemary, Shannon and Brian, Jacob and Ginny, Todd and Michael, Greg and Richard, I couldn't have asked to work with the team any smarter, nimble, innovative, professional, hysterically funny, or more loyal than all of you. My executive officer, Holly Walcott, we shared a commitment to keep our office alive during the worst fiscal crisis in the city's modern history. But over the years, we grew to trust each other's judgment and ended up becoming friends as well as coworkers, for which I am very grateful. I count myself lucky to have served with this particular generation of city employees. I must tell you that I feel I am a radically different person today than I was when I came to this position, and this is all due to your steadfast friendship and support. To repeat myself, the past four years have been the most amazing adventure a homegirl from Echo Park could ever have had. Thank you for coming along with me on this fantastic ride, and God bless you all.
Give it up for June.
Mr. President, could all the members go around you right now and get one group shot for the record for June and all the clerks right there? It's a beautiful picture.
That's a nice idea, has just been whispered in my ear. So you put it together, Mr. President.
Okay, members, please join the podium right there for a quick shot. Sherry, you're the leader. Here we go. Get a good quick shot. Alan, you get the picture, too.
And, Mr. President, I urge everyone not to forget that we still have Oreo in the back searching for home.
There's more.
Everybody smile, even the clerks.
He's a professional. Everybody smile, even the clerks.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's get back to work. And I do want to inform all of the staff and visitors in City Hall that Oreo, the poodle, is still available. Please help us keep our 100% adoption rate alive. Seventy-five, eighty percent of the dogs we get adopted are adopted by people that were either visiting on the day of the adoption or staff members. So Oreo's a phenomenal pet. Let's make sure we find him a home. And if those of you that are watching us on Channel 35, please call in if you have an interest and let us know about Oreo. With that said, Mr. Clerk, we will come back to, we'll go back to our agenda.
Mr. President.
Yes?
Mr. President, there's been a request to continue item number two to August 14. Again, item two to August 14.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
That brings us to item number one, called Special for Cards.
Okay, so here we are on item number one. I'd like to call Mr. Arnold Sacks, Mr. John Walsh, and Juan Akala will be the third speaker. Mr. Sacks, you're first. Mr. Walsh, who I don't, yeah, there he is. Mr. Walsh is second, and then Mr. Akala. How are you, Mr. Sacks?
I'm fine. You get my, I left a little note for you. You know what that's about. Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. I'm gonna, this is from a resolution for the Los Angeles Housing Department that was authored by Councilman Krikorian and seconded by you, Mr. Weston, and it's regarding the LAHD systematic code enforcement program and a rent escrow account program. And it mentions there are 720,000 multifamily rental properties that are routinely inspected throughout the city. And so I'm wondering, because this is a reprogram, and it was an article, you know, some of the discussion lately in the newspapers has been about sidewalks and the repairs and tree trimming that's 25 years to cycle through the city. So what is the cycle for inspecting the properties through the city? You have 720,000 multifamily rental properties in the City of Los Angeles. How often does REEP go through each council district or these code enforcement programs go through each council district and have the ability to inspect the homes, but not necessarily have the ability to inspect the other parts of the districts that they're visiting, such as broken sidewalks, the trees, and last but not least, the homes in foreclosure that have fallen into disrepair? If you're doing 720,000 homes in a city, maybe it behooves you to pay the people a little bit extra money and give them a checklist. Well, if they see something here, they could say something. Now, that's a saying, "See something, say something." And it talks about, you see some dangerous situation on Metro, but you could expand on that throughout the city. See something, say something.
Thanks, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is REEP. Item I, am I still on the subject? Property at 1282 South Highland Avenue. In keeping with the theme of singing here by people at the microphone, I'd like to sing, "Property at 1282 South Highland Avenue." Ay yi yi yi. Please vote, ay yi yi yi. Next one, property 1016 South Mariposa Vision. Am I as good as the Japanese guy? Ay yi yi yi. Vote, ay yi 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 yi. Next one, property at North Kingsley Drive. Vote, ay yi, ay yi, ay yi yi yi. Please, 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 vote, ay yi yi. And if you found that boring, we found that maze singing boring, too. HollywoodHighlands.org. Ay yi yi.
Mr. Akala.
I found the district attorney's, the city attorney's picture.
Speak into the mic, Juan. Couldn't hear you.
I found the city attorney's picture in the Monopoly game. He looked like the little Monopoly guy.
Stay on subject.
Yes, the subject is you're monopolizing real estate so people are not able to afford a place to live. You charge for everything, double, triple, indemnity, blah, blah, blah. You tie everything in red tape so people do not have a place to live. Everybody's homeless, and you're over here drinking coffee, riding in limousines, and doing all those things. You are the Monopoly people. You are.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item three. On item three, I have Mr. John Walsh and again Juan Akala. If you guys would please come forward.
This is a serious issue, no singing. This concerns something about an NAACP celebration. We are 100% in favor of this motion. The NAACP is my inspiration. As a child, when I'm here, I was watching the civil rights marches. This is my inspiration. Had there been no civil rights marches, had there been no NAACP, I'd be home smoking marijuana, okay? This is the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People. They've done an enormous job. We're hoping they do a great job on the Trayvon. And when I saw those people marching on the freeway, I thought, that's what Martin Luther King would have done. He wouldn't have held a press conference at Limerick Park. This is, we must support the NAACP and the This is, we must support the NAACP and the spirit of the NAACP, and I'm so glad that you are supporting it because taking to the streets is what you do. You don't get up there and say, oh, we're gonna have a speech with all our white friends, the way some of you up here have done. HollywoodHighlands.org, viva NAACP. And I never speak anything ill of any black person because I realize they were kidnapped from Africa and brought here. The rest of us came because we wanted to be here. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Akala, please come forward.
That guy is absolutely right every time. Martin Luther King, you did your job, now it's time to celebrate. See, these are the festivities in LA. They have a booklet with all the festivals, yes, a lot of international stuff, but it still remains for the homeless to be taken care of, okay? You have homelessness all over the world and we are stupid enough to let City Hall
Mr. President, he is not talking about this item.
Come on, Mr. Akala, just stay on that item, please.
Things are good, but we gotta celebrate people having a place on earth. We don't need to celebrate every other. Well, we do need to celebrate everything, see? Very soon, you're gonna be facing a little guy that's gonna celebrate everything for you.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Mr. Parks, fourth with, per Mr. Parks, fourth with. Okay, now we're on item four, Mr. Sacks. If you could start making your way down the center aisle, Mr. Walsh and Juan Akala, please come forward. Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. The only reason I held this, well, a couple of reasons, A and B, we need more involvement, neighborhood councils, the ability to have some of the funding that comes into the council districts. But more importantly, the city isn't leasing this space, it's going through the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, so they're the leaseholders on behalf of these neighborhood councils in basically both these items. The same kind of situation could exist for the Business Improvement Districts. I know there's one in Century City that was involved. Why not be consistent in both with the neighborhood councils where you are leasing through the city of Los Angeles and the Business Improvement Districts, especially as you look through your council records and check regarding this Century City Business Improvement District that is under the auspices of the City Clerk's office, I believe. Should be done the same way with the other Business Improvement Districts, eliminate the nonprofits and you eliminate some of the lobbyists, because when the lobbyists get into the nonprofits, they make and take their own salaries.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Walsh followed by Juan Akala.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, I'll go just to J. Walsh Confidential. This simply concerns a lease for the Panorama City Neighborhood Council. They do an excellent job, I'm not gonna take every second, my ego isn't that big. Vote for it, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Akala.
Yeah, it's a good issue, I kinda listened to Mr. Walsh and he knows what he's talking about. See, there's food for the homeless everywhere, we don't have housing.
He's not on topic at all.
On topic, Mr. Akala.
I know, the topic is, we need something for everybody.
That's not the topic, but I get it. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open up the roll, close the roll, tally the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Next, item number six, Mr. Walsh is first this time. He passes, Mr. Arnold Sacks and Juan Akala. And you each have one minute, I've been informed by the clerk. Good to see you again.
Yes, thank you, sir, thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. The reason I held this actually, Honor of Art Day, is my concerns, some of the actions the city council has taken, previous council actions regarding the waiving of transit occupancy tax, which is a stalwart of supporting arts in the city of Los Angeles. The arts community gets a lot of grants that are generated from transit occupancy tax. My concern with the giveaway that's occurred in previous council sessions with some of the new developments and high rises is the fact that before somebody will get termed out the next time around, Art Day will become Art Hour.
Mr. Akala.
I support this completely because I am a performing, no, performance artist on the streets. I'm a homeless dude trying to tell the world, we could be smart enough to provide housing for everyone, that is my art. And I hope City Hall realizes that everything I do here, it's in irony to the idea that we should all be good to one another, but we're doing the opposite. I am an artist, I can paint, I can do all those things, but what good is it if we don't come to a realization that we all need to help one another, first by providing housing for everyone, first?
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, before we go into general public comment, I'd like to, Mr. Buscayino, I believe, has an announcement and we want to take his announcement up now?
Yes, very serious announcement too, colleagues. We remember our first day here, July 2nd or 3rd, we all got socks from council member, council president, Wesson, and it was a direction to give this assignment to me, the Crazy Sock Day, which will all participate next Wednesday. Make sure you wear your Herb Wessons gift socks, but that's not all. What we've taken this to the new level is this, we're gonna be participating in a fun, lighthearted event. There are thousands of residents in our city who are without socks and without the means to obtain basic covering for their feet. And with that in mind, next Wednesday, as we participate in the Crazy Socks Day, we're launching an initiative called the Socks for LA Campaign, where our 15 council districts will compete to see how many socks we can collect. Ultimately, they'll be donated to the Midnight Mission here in downtown Los Angeles, so we're gonna, my office will produce a social media campaign that we'll share with all your offices and staff to help promote this event. So Crazy Socks Day here in the city council will take place Wednesday, August 21st, so make sure you bring your Crazy Socks Day. Nori, did you get Crazy Socks?
Yeah, she got hers Tuesday, right?
You did? Okay, you ready for this? Welcome. So with that, game on, as Mr. Bonin says. So Crazy Socks Day, this Wednesday, please be sure to wear your Crazy Socks Day. We're also gonna take it to a level where we're gonna ask our council offices to donate socks for the Midnight Mission here in downtown LA. Thank you, Mr. President.
Excellent idea, Joey B, excellent idea. Okay, if I could get Mr. LeBonds to come forward, we're going to, Mr. Clerk, is there any business left before this body?
General public comment, sir.
Okay, then we will do that now and it will be supervised by Tom LeBonds.
Arnold Sacks, John Walsh, Jay Kim. Mr. Kim, Mr. Walsh, thank you.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or go to J. Walsh Confidential. Ladies and gentlemen, the blood of Senora Gruppione, whose father was owner of the Bologna soccer team. These are wealthy people. The blood is still stained on the boardwalk and you people are holding a Crazy Socks Day? Maybe we could put those Crazy Socks out there and sop up the blood. I want to say to everybody on the world, if you come here and some crazy white guy kills you, all they're interested in is showing off their Crazy Socks. Don't come to LA on your vacation, San Diego, go to Bakersfield. Crazy Socks? I mean, is there anybody here now who is gonna get up and say, I think Crazy Socks is crazy, I want, I, is there anybody? No, they're all thinking about what their Crazy Socks are gonna be. They don't give a damn about the blood of tourists in this city and the cops only watch out for the minorities. Meanwhile, who's killing everybody? White guys with this skin, who get out of jail 15 or 20 times because of this skin. And of course, the, those here who really underneath their minority skin have the same color of skin as this. Amy is running the city now. She had a fight with Gil. Gil and Amy Wakeland and Gil Garcetti on whose custody of our acting mayor. He's not the mayor, he's an actor. You saw him on the closer, he doesn't run this city and everyone knows that I'm right. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you, good morning, Arnold Sacks. Couple things, on Wednesday's meeting, you had item on your agenda, and thank you, Mr. LeBonds, for explaining that it had been held in the committee regarding the police department's concerns over weapons and the colors that they are. And I was wondering, and I know that I passed this article, I believe it on to somebody in your staff, a few months ago, there was a killing in, I believe, Tennessee or Kentucky, where a young boy shot his sister with a gun that was painted blue. And the same company manufactures guns that are pink for girls. So your color of the weapon ordinance or information that you talked about within your committee hearing and out here on the council chambers, didn't contain any of that information, I don't believe. So there's real guns with real ammunition capable of killing you that are manufactured in the colors of blue and pink. What you got to say about that? And in another light, especially based on the information that came out about the consultants at LAX. You know, you have a special meeting for the Trade Commerce and Tourist Committee next Tuesday, and it concerns LAX, but it doesn't concern the harbor. But more importantly, they're hiring these companies, spending millions of dollars, 30, 40 million dollar contracts, and on top of that, they're paying consultant fees. Well, why are they hiring the companies and then paying consultant fees?
That completes your comment.
It makes no sense at all.
Have a good afternoon. Mr. Kim and Mr. Alvarez, you're gonna speak for Mr. Kim?
Mr. LeBonds, Kim's daughter is gonna represent her father, basically, to communicate, is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Hello, I'm speaking on behalf of my father's business. We moved into that business in, three years ago, with the knowledge that we could place chairs and tables outside on the street and on the sidewalk, allowing us to have 20 customers at a time, but suddenly, there inspectors come in saying that that's illegal now and all the chairs have been pushed inside and we can only have five customers at a time now and it's hurting our business and it's hurting the alley because without all the chairs outside, it looks like the alley's closed and it looks like all the restaurants are closed and the tourists don't come in anymore. And it used to be a very, well, when the chairs are outside, they're allowed to be outside. Tourists come in and they take pictures, it's a very quirky alley for everybody to come in and enjoy and rest while they're touring downtown LA. So I don't know why the reason is that we're not allowed to place chairs out there anymore, but I would like to ask for your help to go back to our way, go back to the way our business was before and allow us to, allow my dad to continue his business and provide for our family. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez, Mr. Alvarez, are you there, Sergio Alvarez? This very special young man.
Hi, my name is Sergio Alvarez and I want to thank you for allowing me to join you guys today. I enjoy getting involved in my community because it feels good to form a bond with people who share the same goals and maybe inspire others to help out. My family and I started out by going, by giving safety classes and, at our local school, and giving free books to kids at our city events. This helped me decide to run for school president, which I won, and form a group of kids that help out in our communities. Together, we raised books to give to children's hospitals and the LAPD Harbor Station. I look forward to working with all you guys in the future, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alvarez. Have a good afternoon. Jamie Obias, is that correct, Jamie? Michael Kerion? Michael's gone, note and file. Richard Robinson? There's Richard. Richard, before you speak, would you give Sergio Alvarez another big hand? Good job, young man, you're the future. Thank you. All right, Richard, here we go.
Mr. President, members, Richard Robinson. I'm often asked, hey, are you a preacher? I reply, no, I'm a Christian. Sir, I have three churches in Michigan, St. Paul Missionary Baptist Churches, Michelle Obama's great-grandfather's church. He's buried there in Michigan after being murdered by the Ku Klux Klan. Michelle's my cousin. We're from Anderson, South Carolina, Arkansas, Mississippi. Her side of the family moved to Chicago, mine moved to Detroit during the Industrial Revolution, the Great Black Diaspora. I'm here today, sir. Tom, in your district, there's a church at Hollywood and La Brea. It was remodeled by my stepmother's family, Joan Oakley, the daughter of Annie Oakley, married to a black man who helped Mrs. Mary Baker Eddy build the Christian Science Church. build the Christian Science Church. Thank you.
Richard, thank you. Juan Akala. Followed by Nina Royal. Nina still here?
Great two minutes to be able to say to all of us, why are we doing to each other what we're doing to each other? Why do we have real estate laws that are so outdated? They go back to the times of the kings and the emperors. And yet, we live by that. We are cruel to one another. We discriminate any race, creed, or color because they have no money, because they have no, no home. And it is the worst kind of discrimination because it is seconded by every single city hall in the world. They send the police forces to enforce laws against the poor, against the miserable. You have seen a lot of, uh, great novels and everything about people that were poor all their lives and that would never have a place to live. Why do we keep repeating this stupidity? Why do we leave people to go eat excrement? I'm beginning to love that word because all the alleys in L.A. smell like excrement. You know why? Because people don't have a place to live. And you know why? Because we run city halls the way we do, recruiting money after money and leaving everybody homeless. We are a bunch of stupid excrement-eating people.
Nina Royal, followed by Nancy Lee Kelly. Nancy Lee here?
Good morning, lady and gentleman. My name is Nina Royal, and I am the Treasurer Safety Chair and a member of the Community Police Advisory Board for the Foot Hill Division. And I would like to speak regarding the, um, the new regulations that have just come out that made many traffic violations either nonexistent or mediocre infractions. Personally, I would like to tell you, I was in an accident a while back with a little MR2. I was hit from behind by a car that was not registered. The person was not licensed. They had no insurance. And for the grace of God, I'm here because I missed a telephone pole across the street by a quarter of an inch. I would be dead. What happened is that person was allowed to take their car home, park it in their garage. My car got impounded. It cost me $4,000 of my own money, and I lost a job. I was supposed to start the next day. This kind of thing will become the way of the future if we do not crack down on traffic violations, people having licenses, having cars that are unregistered, that do not understand the rules of, of the road and its reverse discrimination. It's discrimination against the people that follow the law versus the people that choose to violate it. And I'm asking you to change these ordinances that are coming down the pike. It's not right for citizens. Thank you.
Nancy Lee Kelly.
I humble myself before you all. I'm totally exhausted. I hope I have a couple of more seconds with this issue. I was very happy to move on Sixth Street and Spring at the Haywood Manor on the ninth floor. And for two years, I couldn't believe it. They all said that, "Nancy, you are going to suffer living in that sweet 932." And I said, "Oh, no, I'm not. I think I suffered enough, and I think God's going to give me some rest." And he did. For two solid years, I could not believe that I lived on Sixth Street, and it was quiet as a pin drops. No kidding, two solid years. Even the neighbors on my floor are excellent. All of a sudden, what happened? Now, you figure that bus route, which is about eight buses that come by on Sixth Street. We've got the 720, we've got the 33, we've got the 16, we've got the 430. I don't know, we've got even the bus to Hawaii. But ultimately, what I want to say is that how can something change? How can something be so sweet? We know that good things don't last too long. But let me tell you something. We're talking emissions control, and I'll take it to court if I have to because I have nerve damage. I'm going to see a neurologist, and I can't take the good. Good. You try to sleep like that. Okay? Now, either we get another bus route, don't have so many routes, like eight of them, and plus the depot down there on Maple Street.
That completes your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sid, where's Sid? Sid? Sid Maxodian.
Mr. LeBlanc, can I pass my turn momentarily to bring in the rest of them to speak?
Just have them stand up. Sid, you speak right now. It's your two minutes. Sid's a good speaker. Thank you.
All right. Actually, still, good morning, gentlemen.
And ladies.
And councilmember. The thing is that yesterday, we got raided again at the St. Vincent Alley, even though that we were assured that we will have a meeting with Mr. Huizar on Monday at 4:30. But the chief has raided us again because, according to the chief and to Morales, that the directive is coming from the city council, quote-unquote. This has to stop. Lives are being destroyed in that alley. It was a ghost town again yesterday. These individuals, they are here. It's not fault of their own. Few things I need to remind the city council. 12 years ago, when this city council, the predecessors, approved the plan to do the downtown alley, they paved it. But there's a trigger mechanism. When the city does a project in an alley, how is it that when they did that project, they never took in consideration the ADA rules, which supersedes the city rules because under the federal stature, to widen those sidewalks? This city is liable for something it's on record that you approved, but you didn't do a complete job. And you knew then that these individuals were sitting out there. And now, because of Shahram DeLijani, with his influence of millions of dollars that are being pumped in the downtown with the blessing of this council, it has to stop. He's got to have some accountability. Isad DeLijani, God rest his soul, this is not what he wanted. This is not what he visioned. We urge you to help these individuals. I thank you.
And before you leave, just for a second, you're speaking for the Tulip Cafe as well? Mr. Raisid, thank you for the record there. And we're also speaking for Sylvan Medical Center on Broadway, is that correct there? And also for Mr. Oz from the St. Vincent's Deli. Thank you so much. And for Mr. Der Hothun. You're speaking for them as well?
If the chair allows. If not, they're going to do their best to communicate with you because of language barriers.
Just speak their heart out. Boom, 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 but just get to your point. But you've been a great advocate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Kachin Chelek. I've been in downtown in 36 years in the same location. And I opened a store at 2008 at St. Vincent Court. I didn't know anything about the sidewalk problems. And then, I'm sure everybody knows, but the location was a bullocks building. And when I was there, they had a Pasquini cappuccino place there. And, and people were sitting outside and on the street, and nobody was saying anything. And when they made the, ADA made the handicap ramp, and they know that we have a five-foot sidewalk, and it was the chairs there, and then nobody, they, nobody did anything, and nobody said anything. And I'm sure this, that's more than 35 years. And why suddenly, right now, that in six months ago, the sidewalk is the illegal, and putting on the street is the chairs was illegal? Why it's not illegal, but 35 years ago? And I'm asking you these questions, you know? But, but you guys, that's, you guys let us open up a business there. I get a loan from the equity line and my house, and I put $200,000 in the restaurant. Now I'm going to lose my restaurants? I might lose my house? And who's going to be the guilty party on this? And you guys, we elect you guys, and we brought you here, and you guys have to check these things, check these things, you know? And, uh, Mr. Sad is mentioned too. That's, I was there, I saw with my own eyes, they fixed the street, and then it was the tables and chairs on the sidewalk that time, and nobody said anything. And I mean, who, we're going to ask that, what's right, what's wrong? Now I've been calling left and right. Everybody says, "We don't know. It's not our department. It's not our, we're not looking at that section." Mr. Huizar had a, a section on the newspaper that said... Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Sid, I have a deputy for Mr. Huizar. Could we meet your team over at the ropes? Could we note these cards right there? Because I think there should be a discussion. Is that okay?
Mr. Oz wants to also speak.
Mr. Oz, please speak.
Thank you, members of city councils. My name is Norire Oz. I have a business at the St. Vincent Court, Seven and Hill Street in the alley. For 27 years, I have this restaurant, which I built with hard work. About six months ago, city services enforced us to remove all our tables and chairs because of an individual, which is, I believe, Mr. Shahram DeLijani, made a complaint to city because of his, his interest and benefits of St. Vincent Court. Since then, I, I harass every day from city services, and I am losing a lot of my business, which I worked hard for 27 years to build to, for my family, you know? And I would like city council members to consider this matter and have a solution for us. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Oz. We got it all, Sid?
Yes, for the other two gentlemen, they declined to speak because of the language barrier they have. I will take it up with Mr. Huizar's...
And that's Mr. Hooton?
This is Mr. Sarafian.
Is that Mr. Sarafian?
Unless you allow him to address in Armenian, he will do so.
That's okay.
But English, he cannot communicate very well.
I know that, but you've communicated... Mr. Eric, Eric is here, the deputy for Mr. Huizar. Thank you. We'll note that file as well.
Thank you very much.
And then the, Greal O'Stelli as well. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to call on Brian. Is Brian here? Brian Bros?
Hello, I have a new document. I'll turn in partial of it. But on the LaRouche Pack website, there's a document now out called Detroit Arsenal of Democracy or Test Case for Fascism. Now, the title of this, of this document goes through Banqua, Bankrupt Wall Street, not Detroit. Next, Science versus Accounting, which is what I'm going to be turning in. The next is Detroit Needs Glass Stigl, not a Financial Dictatorship by Lamar Lemons, who is the president of the Board of Education in Michigan and was previously the state legislator for Michigan, 1999 through 2007. Now, as goes Detroit, Detroit and the Cypress Template. Five, The Crimes of Wall Street Towards a New Pacora Commission. The sixth, The New Industrialization Creating the Future, a Nuclear NAWAPA 21 Program. Now, this document by Lyndon LaRouche, I wanted to quote him, quote, "It's, it is not possible, even as matter of simply physical reality, to separate an increase of poverty in one sector from the consequent loss of productivity in other sectors of the same economy. The increase of the impoverished becomes ultimately the poverty of the once rich." End quote. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I mean, I don't know if you guys ever noticed what war looks like, but when you have a disintegrating process going on, I think we need Glass Stigl.
All right, now we have David Barron.
Good morning, Commissioner, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, my neighbors. I'm here to oppose the mural ordinance. I do support the Cultural Affairs Commission for their goal to enhance our, our neighbor, our neighbors and our communities throughout this city. I too am an artist. My most recent published, uh, certified, copyrighted art depicts city hall running away from taxpayers' money. So I love the arts, but I think it's a poor choice to come up with a mural ordinance because city, uh, city council has been weak in enforcing our city council, our city municipal codes. We have Chapter Four, which depicts violations of graffiti on public and private property, and that's not being enforced strongly. We have a, Chapter Number One. Chapter One depicts that murals are, um, are prohibited unless approved by the locals' specific ordinance. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Jaime Olivas. Sergeant, this is the last card that I have. I have no other cards for public comment. So I just want to double-check that. Do you remember getting a card from this gentleman? If you would, please, to the microphone. Thank you. Start the clock, Madam Clerk. State your name.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Bobby Cooper.
Thank you, Bobby. Continue.
Yeah, I've been coming down here, what is it, three years now? With regards to my business and problems I've been having with the Los Angeles, individual Los Angeles police officers. Listen, I finished with my investigation with regards to my business and what's happening. I've got something like more than, probably $5 million missing from my accounts, my business, property stolen, ideas, designs stolen from my business through the spying and stuff on my business. I paid an organization called Documents Preparations and Estate Verification. They, they're people that document your estate, and they hire, well, attorney was hired. I gave the man $5,000. She sent me over to Bank of America with a note, what is it, Wells Fargo, with a note. I come back with maybe, what is it? It looks like six, seven account numbers that my money that I deposited, and they, what? More than $15,000. And now being accounted for for using my business, my money, my name. I turned this over to Billy Lee, you know, and tried to get some help from Adult Protective Services because of my age. One of them went on an England vacation. The other one never called me. He never showed up again. These are Bank of America official managers, Ricardo Quinza, Quinzanora, and Cassie, Cassie Dugan. It's the Bank of America on Sixth Street, downtown Los Angeles. I'm dealing now with the new mayor and your investigation personnel, and I will be here on in on this matter. I am. We'll see what happens after that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Cooper. Members of the council, Madam Clerk, Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, that completes our public comment. What is next, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered, next item?
The desk is clear.
Desk is clear. Any announcements, members? We got Nisei Week this week in Little Tokyo, so remember that. Also, we want to call on adjourning motions at this time. Members, any adjourning motions? All, please rise for adjourning motions. Sergeant, members standing here sometimes are the nameless faces of some of the nicest people we work with. They're the cameraman of the various television shows, the newsmakers, the channels. They're the cameraman of the various television shows, the newsmakers, the channels. Seven, Channel Seven's very own Steve Chacon passed away recently, a photojournalist popular among his colleagues and the Los Angeles press corps died Wednesday after suffering a stroke two weeks earlier. He worked since 1977, so each of us know him, at KABC. He was 58 years old, had a strong presence in the newsroom at Eyewitness News, and he will be sorely missed. He's an outstanding cameraman who shot what he saw and spoke his mind fearlessly with a legendary sense of humor. His services are right now at Forest Law in Hollywood Hills and we will extend the condolences to his family. I ask we remember Steve Chacon. Eyewitness News, one of their great cameramen. Also, members, Mr. Garcetti and I, years ago, as he was a council member, had the great honor in 2007 to give a start to the Walk of Fame to the seven remaining munchkins. Sadly, Margaret William Pegrillen just passed away. She was born in Alabama and she lived here in Glendale, California, Glendale, Arizona, excuse me. She was one of the munchkins. I believe there's two left, including Jerry Maron, the lollipop kid, who lives in my district on Coldwater Canyon. He lives in your district, Paul, but I sneak in and see him all the time I can, but he's a great guy. But let's think about Margaret and and all the munchkins and all the people of the world and the joy that film has brought us all. Because as Dorothy said, there's no place like home. Margaret now is home in heaven. Let's adjourn in memory of Margaret Williams Pellegrin. Members, see another other business go serve the city well and remember every day is a blessing. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.